Welcome to the Monday, October 16th, 2016 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Lansing.
Here.
Alderman Feidler.
Here.
Alderman Morris.
Here.
Alderman Newman.
Here.
Alderman Rumel.
Here.
Alderman Tac.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Moreno is absent. Alderman Bushman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is the reports of city officers. And I will start off with two things. First, a big thank you to the League of Women Voters who have organized, held, conducted, moderated, moderated two very important forums in the last couple of weeks. One, the State of Fiscal Affairs, which brought the leadership of Lake Forest and our city's schools, School District 67 and the High School District, together to talk about the challenges from Springfield and the various choices and estimations of the future as to how this may affect our respective governmental entities. And also a forum that Trinity College on freight railroads and in the Chicago area and their trends, and an excellent panel of experts, and I think it was very informative. These forums take a lot of work to organize and put together, and the League's consistent dedication to having them and to getting them done right is worthy of recognition. Secondly, I'd like to report on some action I've taken in recent weeks and months regarding leaf blowers, a popular topic in suburban America. Since I became mayor about five months ago, it's the leading inbound communication source is leaf blowers. And, you know, we all have our own tolerances for leaf blowers and thus our own opinions and values across the city about them. However, in thinking about all of this and being very mindful, the evolution of technology and different types of leaf blowers and how they're used and that sort of thing, I think the time has come to formally revisit the city's leaf blower policy. I think, on the one hand, most everyone in Lake Forest appreciates a tidy home. It's a big investment for all of us, and we appreciate the attractiveness of a well-kept home. On the other hand, technology has created much quieter equipment, whether handheld or motorized or whatever, or electric. And I have asked city staff to conduct a study, which is underway, to look at various associations involved with leaf blowers and some engineering evaluations, if you will, looking for perhaps industry standards of noise emission. Let's just face it, let's get right down to the facts here. There are leaf blowers which are hideous and are so loud and so whining, and by the way, some of the smaller electric handheld ones are the worst offenders, that it directly intrudes on the quiet enjoyment of our properties. And when these things wind up at 7:45 in the morning, on Sunday morning, it's not very pleasant for anybody. And I think there's a lot of tolerance across this town, but I think technology and the quieter equipment, which might be phased in over a reasonable period of time, are going to be able to offer some relief. That's my surmise in asking the staff to look at this. So, in the coming months, there'll be some reports and some evaluations, and as a council we'll take it up, first through Public Works Committee, and take a look at all that. With that weighty but noisy issue, taking care of comments from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Can I ask Mike Strong first? Mike Thomas, you hold on. Mike Strong, can you put up the pictures? I want to give you a sneak preview of a project that's been going on for a while now but is coming to a close, and we hope that next week, the new bathrooms at the Central Business District Train Station, the Union Pacific Station downtown Lake Forest, will be open for use by general public. As you can see, it's a tremendous enhancement over the bathrooms that have existed at the train station for the last, I don't know what, 100 years, or however long the train station's been open. The other point I would make is that at the November, first meeting, November City Council meeting, we will be bringing back to you sort of a recap of where we stand financially on this project, but also talking about the next phase of the interior renovation that involves the Historic Preservation Foundation. You know, the Preservation Foundation has been raising funds to do some renovation of the main, I want to say, holding area, the main lobby of the train station. It is sort of a holding area though, too, isn't it? And we've got some work underway in terms of replacing the floor and the wainscoting, refinishing the wainscoting and doing some other interior improvements there. So, we'll give you an update soon, but if you're a commuter or you know commuters, you can let them know that next week, we anticipate that the bathrooms will finally be, the new bathrooms will be finally functional and open, and the old bathrooms will be taken out of commission and then eventually demolished to make further room available in the lobby area. Yes, Alderman Tac?
Is that lower right the current one?
Actually, that's the one under construction. They haven't put up the partitions and some of the other things, so.
It's a little scary.
You did say open.
Yeah, this is more of a European look.
I'm glad Randy had the guts to ask.
All right, well, moving on very quickly to another topic, I did ask our Director of Public Works, Mike Thomas, to come here this evening and talk about a much more serious subject, which is the storm event on Saturday evening, and then steps that are being taken to address a number of areas of town that experienced flooding in the most recent event. So, Mike?
Great, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, staff is going to present yet another overview of a strong storm that came through Lake Forest Saturday evening. I hope I do not sound like a broken record, but there are many similarities to July 12th. So, I will take you through our summaries. The July 12th storm, if you remember, we measured 6.7 inches. That was actually at Municipal Services. It was 5.4 down at the water plant. This past Saturday evening, we had 3.71 at the water plant, 3.41 at MS, but if you look down at the bottom of the page, Butler, Wesley and Butler, they measured 5.21. West Park measured 4.32, South Park 4.41. We also experienced rain earlier in the week when they canceled the Cubs game on Wednesday, and that measured in at 1.88 inches. So, although we had a very dry period, we received that rain last week, then this storm came through, and it came through relatively quickly as compared to the storm.
Mike, just to be clear, Butler is where?
Butler's at Wesley and Butler, so west of Green Bay, east of the creek, east of 41, just east of the creek.
That's a city-maintained?
Butler, yeah, it's a road, Butler's a street.
It's a cul-de-sac, it does end there. No, but I mean the inches, the gauge.
No, actually, this is from one of the apps that we subscribe to, Weather Underground, and it gives us rain data and all sorts of data from various points around Lake Forest. So, there's actually, as I said, South Park, West Park, Water Plant, MS, Butler. But I bring this to you because it's interesting to see the differences throughout the city, depending upon exactly where you were at. So, we wanted to highlight that portion.
Mike, in terms of the rainfall total, is there a relevancy to the amount of time that rainfall occurs? In other words, if it's over 12 hours, it's different than if it occurs over three hours?
Yes, very much so, as well as ground saturation, as well as compared to the storm back in July, when we didn't have many leaves down, obviously. Now we have leaves. So, we were dealing with the intensity, the duration, leaves on the ground, many different things, ground saturation. All of that plays into, especially when you begin to have runoff, it begins to play into flooded streets, et cetera. This chart, you may remember from the presentation we made in early August, if we were to look at the Butler Rain Gauge, and it's interesting, this application will give us the amount per hour. At 7:00 PM, the Butler Rain Gauge read 2.45. So, that's approximately a 50-year storm event. If you remember, as we spoke about in August, these are simply rates. It's not that this storm happens once every 50 years or once every 100 years, it is simply the rate, so amount of rain over a period of time. Some of the other measurements were a little bit less, around 1.9 or so, so they fell into the 10-to-maybe-20-year event. But again, as I noted, we're dealing with some other nuances that we didn't have back in July. Similar, our approach is going to be very similar as it was in July. We first focus on investigating basement flooding, especially sanitary backup. That's our number-one concern. If people are receiving sanitary, we need to know. And we ask that the residents call us right when it's happening, so we can check to see if our sewers are plugged, or if possibly their lateral is full or plugged as well. Secondly, we'll obviously want to be interested in basements that received any storm water to see if there's, again, something that, on our system, that we need to improve, or if there's some things that the homeowner can do themselves. Three, street flooding. We had a good amount of street flooding that we dealt with from that early evening period till about 1:00 in the morning, when we called the guys back and things had opened up. And then finally, yard flooding. That's one of the lowest priorities. We understand it happens, but we also try to educate the residents to say, "We've got many other things going on during an event like this, but we're happy to come over and give people some free advice on things they can do to minimize that." Again, our stormwater policy can be found on the city's website. As a reminder to everyone watching at home, it was adopted by City Council in March of 2016, and then we've had multiple stormwater drainage studies that have occurred over the years, and we've had five major storm sewer projects since 2003, and then obviously with the one we just completed out in the 4th Ward. This is simply a chart to show that, yes, we had problems all over the city. It wasn't just in one specific spot. So, whether they were basement or street flooding or yard flooding, interestingly enough, the calls that we received were evenly spread across the city. Again, we're confident there are a lot more out there, and we have continued, actually, even as we were putting this chart together at 5:00, we received two or three more. So, that data is going to, it's going to increase. But this, again, just shows we had issues across the city. So, again, what will we be doing? We will continue to offer this week, if residents have material in their basements that was damaged from a flood, they put it out at the curb, we'll pick that up, no charge. Obviously, the compo center is open on the weekend as well. We're going to continue our street sweeping. We had just finished a cycle on Friday. Street sweeper goes out every day, not on Saturdays and Sundays, but it goes out every day, especially in the fall. Here in another week, we're going to start running two cycles, so we're going to run two eight-hour shifts. It takes us about, depending upon the loads, about two, two-and-a-half weeks to get through a whole cycle, meaning we get through the whole town. So, although we could say to residents, "We finished the street sweeping cycle on Friday," well, people living over on Waveland, we weren't there for a good week and a half, two weeks. So, leaves cover the catch basins, and that's part of what happened to us on Saturday evening. We are going to inspect all of our stormwater inlets and outfalls. That's going to take some time, and we're also going to notify the state and Union Pacific regarding their inlets and outfalls, meaning especially this area that is north of Deer Path, east of Waukegan Road. Waukegan Road, we think, has got some inlets that are plugged, at least covered with material. 41 has some, and Union Pacific as well. It's a challenge to get movement on that, but we're going to push because we realize that entire watershed, all that water moves east to the creek, right next to Public Safety Building. So, those inlets have got to be open, and when we looked at them, and the hospital looked at them recently, a lot of them are plugged. So, we're going to be working with the hospital to strongly encourage IDOT and Union Pacific to get those open, because we think that's a good part of the problem here. Post-long-term, we will continue to offer home inspections. We will line our sanitary and storm sewers. Those are capital projects you see in the CIP each year. We'll continue to line manholes, inspect and clean the ravine inlets and outfalls, the home inspection program, as we noted, and then every three years, as it stands now, City Council has a large, or the city has a large stormwater project budgeted. Again, what can the residents do short-term? They can contact our management analyst, Jimmy Lockaffier. Jimmy is the one that sets up the appointments. He'll get someone from our water sewer section, as well as someone from engineering, and visit the resident's home. We encourage everybody to have a battery backup power sump pump. Confirm that it discharges, and it has an air gap. So, if that sump pump is tied to a storm sewer and that storm sewer surcharges, meaning it's full, you want to have an air gap as it leaves your home, so that water doesn't come back into your home, that it'll splash out right outside your home. That's what an air gap does, that's the purpose. If not, verify that they're discharging away from the foundation, remove debris from window well drains, cover the window wells as well. And then the other good thing, Lake County Stormwater Management has put together a homeowners floodproofing expo and workshop. It's going to be this Thursday. It is free. It is really there to help homeowners and give them ideas of different things they can do to floodproof their homes, whether it's plumbers or engineers or landscape architects. But it's this Thursday, October 19th, from 3:00 to 8:00 PM, out at the Libertyville Sport Complex. I believe that's at 137 and 45. But it's a very, very large indoor area, and they're going to have many different vendors there. So, the residents that received water that called us for inspections from the July storm, we went ahead and sent them a letter saying, "This is coming up." Again, it's free, but just to give you some options, please feel free to attend. Hopefully, you can get some ideas. Residents, as far as long-term, overhead plumbing or install a check valve, that prevents sanitary sewage from coming back. If our sewer main fills up, overhead plumbing and check valves prevent that from coming into your home. And the biggest thing that we are seeing a lot of is that homeowners really need to do a good job at properly grading their property. So, if the water is coming at them, at their home, you want to have that home graded so it goes around the home, on the sides, and out to the street. So, again, those are some things that we see when we visit the residents and offer some suggestions. With that, that actually is the North Beach Access Road, and we had some washout from the storm on Saturday. Some of the stone that we placed to prop up that road washed out, so we're going to be going back to put in some larger stone that will hopefully not wash out. So, very active, and I'd be happy to entertain or answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the other point I think I would add, particularly based on the gentleman's comments here earlier this evening, is clearly we have a lot of work to do to educate the public about what our system can and cannot do. Our stormwater management system, or our stormwater system within the roads and so forth, is designed for a 10-year storm. Despite the fact that people don't think it was a very big event on Saturday night, it was a big event on Saturday night and exceeded the capacity of the city's storm sewer system, and therefore, there is going to be surcharging, or certainly, the pipes are full to capacity, and there's no room for people to pump into the system, or you're going to see standing water. I think we have ways to go, and based on the emails, I think many of you have received over the last 48 hours, we've got a long way to go to really encourage residents to work with us, to help them, because I think we're starting to see a greater frequency of these intensity of storms that we're having, and I think that that will only continue as we go forward. Also, I think we have to recognize the fact that not only in our community, but in communities north of us, which are flowing through our communities during rain events like this, that there is more development, there is more impervious surface, and all of those things are happening, and we are not increasing the capacity of our storm sewer system. So, it's sort of like allowing the development to occur and not increasing the road systems around it to handle the additional traffic, and then wonder why we're having traffic backups. Well, in this situation, we are going to have water in the streets. What we're trying to do is avoid having waters in the home, but if there's water in the yard, that's okay with us, as long as it's not getting into the house, because eventually it will go away, either in the ground or will naturally drain over. And I think those are the kinds of things that we need to work with people, in addition to ongoing maintenance. I think Mike mentioned a few things in terms of culverts on 41 and culverts on Waukegan Road, and that's going to require constant vigilance and making sure that we're inspecting those on a regular basis. It makes it more difficult because they're not under our jurisdiction, and you would like to think that other governmental agencies are out there looking at it, but based on some visual inspections of some of the outfall pipes on 41, that it looks like they haven't been inspected for probably 20 years, based on the amount of siltation that's backed up there. So, those are things that we will have to do, but there's, I know a Public Works Committee meeting that we need to reschedule where we'll be talking about this, but I imagine that this conversation will be going on in the community for a while, and also talking about how we can help residents help themselves, because, you know, I've had a conversation with one resident, and they said, "Well, why don't we just increase the size of the storm sewer pipes?" While I don't yet have pricing, my guess is, is that it's probably 10 times the magnitude of the unfunded liability or police and fire pension fund. So, if people don't want to see their taxes go up for that, they're not going to want to see their taxes go up by going from a 10-year design to a 50-year design on our storm sewer system. So, practically, I think we've got to look at solutions that work well for everybody, but I think also it's important that we all change our mindset and recognize that rain gardens aren't bad things, and a lot of other things are good things for us, and that we are going to have to learn to live with this if we're going to continue to expand our impervious service, not only in our community, but in communities around us as well. So, with that, we'll answer any questions you might have.
I'd like to just make the comment, I'm sure we must have gotten calls about not going out driving if we didn't have to before, but I was very appreciative of that alert. I know there were people who were out who didn't have a choice about getting home, but I think it was a good alert to people who would have gone out optionally, so appreciate that. I am curious, Sally, how much impact did the rain have on the Oktoberfest? Is that, is it acceptable to still, love Mike's time for that? I know we had a tent this year.
Oh, God.
So, we did have a tent. We did put it in the parking lot, which helped us. Oktoberfest actually ran for about two hours. We pulled the plug, so to speak, at 7:00 with the thunder and the lightning, and then with notification that streets were starting to flood, and we just decided it was time to get everybody home. We did actually have pretty decent attendance, considering how bad it rained all day.
Okay, all right. I didn't realize that you'd made that decision. I think that was probably smart, so, okay.
Mike, I'd like to explore a little further at the season where we do have a lot of leaf fall. I know I'm in the habit, in my street, to go out and look at the, I got two drain tiles in the curb area in front of my home, and if they're not cleaned, you know, the water will overflow the curbs in the street. And I know I did clean them up a couple days before the storm. After the storm, the leaves were already 90% covered, the two drains ready and needed further cleaning. Couple comments. One, I didn't see where you're recommending the residents to do that, to check the drains in front of their home, to clean them up, get rid of the leaves if they can. And the second thing is, I understood what you said, you have the sweeper, it completes a cycle in like two-and-a-half weeks, and you're thinking of going to a second shift, but it's still not doing in the weekends. At this high season of leaf fall, should we be thinking about, because how much impact does come from leaves blocking those drains? Now, you talk about being at full capacity. Was it a full capacity in the system, or is it the fact that the water just wasn't able to flow into the drains? I don't know.
Right. So, we actually do run a double shift, starting about now. We will run a double shift.
Maybe you should have started last week. Okay.
Yeah, and well, and that was the challenge, is that a lot of the leaves, we really didn't see, a lot of the leaves begin to drop, and we haven't had a frost yet, and that usually kicks things in for us. But we have for at least four or five years now run double shifts, starting mid-October all the way until the first snowflake. So, we do do that. We'll run it at least five days a week. If we need to, fine, we'll catch up and we'll work on overtime as well, but we essentially will split the guys' shifts, so we're still doing it straight time. We have a guy come in at 4:00 in the morning, we've got a guy coming in later in the afternoon, he runs till evening hours. Interestingly enough, at times, we do receive complaints from residents, as the sweeper goes by at 4:00, 4:30, 5:00 in the morning, the noise, the lights. We will receive a couple phone calls each year complaining about that. As far as residents cleaning off the catch basins, I say, yes, that would be wonderful, a little hesitant, concerned. There are some times where if that storm sewer is surcharged, actually, the lid potentially could come up. We've had one over on Wesley and Sheridan before, we've had one on Deer Path. So, yes, it is a good thing to do, we just want people to be careful. When we sent our guys out on Saturday night, we sent them out in pairs. It'd be more efficient to send them out single, but it's so dark, and not every street has streetlights by any means. There's, you just want to be at least sitting on the grass, you don't want to be standing in the street.
Are you talking about the curb, the grading that's fitted to the curb?
Yep.
That grading will pop out?
Catch basin lid, yep. Doesn't happen a lot, but it has happened, it has happened a couple times.
Of course, it would be at the high point of the storm where it's at its peak.
Where's a huge flow, absolutely.
I don't go out at that point in time. I try and anticipate in advance.
Don't use a metal rake.
But, you know, do you have any thoughts as to how much the backup was because of clogged drains versus, you know, capacity being reached?
A lot of our roads, as I said, we pulled guys in around 1:00 in the morning because actually the water had gone down. That tells us that it was significant amount of leaves on top of the basins, but that the system was initially surcharged. It was full. Quite frankly, give it 20 minutes, it goes down. But when you have leaves sitting on top and that buildup, it just makes it worse. So, it's great if we could have people rake the leaves off, they'll become frustrated. So it is, it's great if we could have people rake the leaves off, they'll become frustrated pretty quickly, because within another 10 minutes or so, everything is washing down to that catch basin, and they fill up again. So when we were sending guys out, we were going to quote our hotspots. We knew Washington, Deer Path, Old Elm. There are certain areas that there was already plugged, and we needed to get those roadways open, that were, the roadways were already flooding significantly. So, long answer, yes, but please be careful.
I have a comment. Adding on to the city manager's comment, it's not just impermeable surface to the north of us and development. I believe that it's impermeable surface within our own community that adds to this as well. Every patio that's impermeable, every tennis court, even every swimming pool that's installed, every driveway that's impermeable, adds to this flooding problem. So I wonder if we should look a little bit internally, too, as to what we can do to promote more permeable surfaces within our own community when we're issuing building permits for some of these household improvements. You know, it certainly goes to massive homes, and I know we have bulk ordinances, but still, every, every parkway, every sidewalk that we put in, whether it's a private one or whether it's city-owned, is also adding to this problem. And so I think some of this begins at home, making residents aware, and, you know, maybe we need to look at our own city policies, because I don't think this is going away. I think that, that we're going to be seeing increased rainfall, and so I think we all need to recognize that we need to change, we just can't continue to do business the old way, which was putting down impermeable surfaces even in our, on our own lots. It's, you know, it's similar to native plantings and all of this, if we can, and getting rid of buckthorn, if we can do that in our own homes, it goes a long way toward improvement. So I just am wondering if we can kind of look on a city basis as to our policies with regard to impermeable surface. I, you know, I know there are websites that are, you know, dedicated to this, but, but I think it's a problem, and I think we can start to address it even within our own community. And so I'd encourage us to, to look at ways that we can do that.
Please, your report for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next item, comments by council members. I know we have a report of the Finance Committee regarding the receipt of the fiscal year 2017 Treasurer's Report. Finance Committee Chairman Morris.
Thank you. As you can see, this is a acknowledgement of receipt. I was gonna ask the Finance Director if she wants to make any comments. It's a fairly perfunctory acknowledgement, so.
Yes, we did take a look at this at the immediately preceding Finance Committee. This is a requirement under state statute that Treasurer's Report be published in the newspaper within six months of the fiscal year end. So that Treasurer's Report is included in your packet for review. The formatting is not ideal, but as we reported at the Finance Committee meeting, that is for publication purposes, and to try to minimize costs of publication. There is a more user-friendly version on the website for vendors being paid over $2,500 in the fiscal year, and that can be reviewed at the city's website. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So I think we need to have a motion to...
Yes. This requires council action to acknowledge receipt of the Treasurer's Report, so may have a motion to do so.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Is there someone in the audience that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is the omnibus vote of various matters. There are four today. One is approval of the October 2nd, 2017 City Council minutes. Number two, approval of an ordinance amending city code relating to the real estate transfer taxes. This is the second reading for which a final approval is sought. Three, approval of a second amendment to the water tower and ground lease agreement between the City of Lake Forest and Sprintcom dot, Sprintcom Inc. Fourth, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is the first reading, and if desired by the council, final approval. If any woman would like, any council member would like an item taken separately, we can vote to do that, if they just have incidental questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Just, just one remark, if I might, on the transfer tax, section 166B1. The word "notice" in the third line should be deleted, it's in the second sentence. I'm sure you all caught that. I missed it, I'm sorry.
And that's to make clear that any person who is selling their home in Lake Forest and buying their home in Lake Forest, and has bought a home, and a year after closing still has not been successful in selling their home, they don't have to give a notice within that one-year period. They can wait, and when they are successful in selling the home, apply then for the variance, hopefully under the one-to-two-year cycle, to the city manager. Actually, on the minutes, I have two comments. One is indicated as present was myself. I was under the weather with a virus. You'll see that. And then also, counselor, item number seven in the minutes, new business number one on the fifth line. Said city council members are encouraged to exercise discipline and discouraged regarding, I think, ex parte contact. I think there's a typo on there.
Yeah, discouraged. Absolutely discouraged, right. And your presence was felt, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure you weren't there.
I'm sure you had caught that previously. Item number nine, the title is spelled, misspelled, but those are the, when I picked up.
Geez. That's some time.
Well, when you're lying in bed, you have a lot of things...
Your literary background is showing.
Okay, any other comments, thoughts on these four items? If not, I will accept a motion to approve the four items as presented, and modified.
So moved as modified.
Second is modified.
Okay. City clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is ordinances. And tonight, we shall consider approval of an ordinance establishing administrative procedures for assessing and determining claims under the Public Safety Employee Benefits Act, otherwise known as PSEBA, which was discussed very early this morning with, at the Personnel Compensation Administration Committee. Dushay Kalmar, Director of Human Resources, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. PSEBA is something that our police and fire, sworn police and fire, have the ability to apply for if they are injured in a line of duty and receive a line-of-duty disability pension. They have the right to apply. And what we're looking at here, what they receive would be health insurance paid for 100% by the city for themselves and their families, their spouses, for the rest of their lives, and for their children until they reach 26, actually, age 26. What we are proposing tonight is just a revision of the process for them to apply for these benefits, and I would like to turn it over to Vic Philippini to explain it in more depth, because he really worked on this with the state, with the Illinois Municipal League, so.
Members of the council, the PSEBA Act in itself establishes what the benefits are, but it doesn't tell you how to figure them out. And there's actually a couple of processes involved. One is through the pension board, whether the fire pension board or the police pension board. But then the flip side of that is the city's determination for coverage. The city had, and a policy developed, it was not codified, back in about 2010, when we had another, when we had an application presented. Since that time, there has been a couple of cases that have come down that made clear the authority for establishing local procedures and clarifying what those procedures are. That triggered a more comprehensive review of this issue by the Illinois Municipal League, and I participated on a, on a task force with that. What you have before you is a modified version of our existing provisions, and it does not fully track what the IML has recommended. One of the things that we have incorporated into this set of procedures that the IML's procedure did not, is the option for the city council always to retain final decision-making. You'll note that there are two types of administrative hearings that are set forth in this. One is through a hearing officer, and the other one is an evidentiary hearing. The evidentiary hearing is an option that the council would be allowed to take in order to make sure that the decision ultimately comes back to the council. PSEBA is an important benefit for our public safety personnel. At the same time, it can be a very expensive proposition for the city, and so making sure that people are properly qualified to receive the benefit is something that, that has undergone a lot of scrutiny throughout the state, and also through the city itself. And this process that is before you is to codify what we already have with some updates in the mechanisms for doing so, so that we have a, an established means to allow people to apply, and to then evaluate and rule upon eligibility for the benefit. So I'll be happy to get into any of the details if you'd like, but that's the overview of both where we are, how we got here, and what's proposed.
Thank you. Any questions, observations? Any comments from the audience, from the public? Seeing none, I bring it back for a motion to approve the ordinance as presented. Do I hear a motion? So moved.
Second.
E, including the waiver of first reading?
Including the waiver of first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. City clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Next item is new business, there being none. The next item on the agenda is an executive session, and there will be no further business of the council following this executive session. I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Illinois statutes. The council will be discussing the disposition of property and the consideration for the sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
Mayor, can I just add that it might be acquisition and/or disposition?
Okay, acquisition or disposition of property as well.
And to get better clarification, is that under C5 and C6?
That's correct.
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, this is a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Newman.
Aye.
Alderman Rumel.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Bushman.
Aye.
Seven yea, zero nay, motion carries.
Thank you. We are now adjourned into executive session.[1764.33]